Meeting for Monday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three to order at six thirty P M. Um, I'll read the agenda, um, call to order, pledge of allegiance, visitors' comments, old business, board of health meeting, um, Ari, the loss of Lester B O H agreement and impacts, condemned structures on Church Street, police storage container, other old business, new business, Q drug, permission to place purple ribbons around town for substance awareness weekend of February twenty-five to twenty-six, and remove them on March twelfth, hydrant abatements, appointment and procedure Ned Kelly for C O A, sewer project change order, tax map, maintenance proposal, one day license stone church, other new business, discussion in our vote relative to ARPA funding, committee reports, miscellaneous correspondence, town administrator report, signatures and approvals, selectmen around table and adjournment. Um, so if we, um, could all rise and, um, do the pledge of allegiance, that'd be great. There is a, a flag behind Nicole.
I pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, um, behind Nicole, I think we have two Alice's. Um, so, um, Nicole has asked if we could, um, take the agenda out of order a little bit so that, um, we could do the appointments and procedure for Ned Kelly for C O A. Kelly and Rob, are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so we are going to move, uh, under new business, letter C appointments and procedure Ned Kelly for C O A to the front. Um, I believe, do we have a letter in our packet?
Yes.
Nicole? Um. Kelly and Rob, any questions or concerns on this?
I don't have any.
Anything, anything that Alice, you want to say relative to appointment of Ned to the C O A?
Does anyone want to say anything about the appointment?
They hope that you appoint him.
Kelly, Rob, any discussion on that?
I'm good.
Okay.
Do you want a motion?
Please.
I would make a motion that we appoint Ned Kelly to the council on aging of Hardwick.
Do we know the term, Nicole? Whose vacancy is he filling?
Um, there has been one for quite a while. Uh, I'm sorry, let me pull it up. I can't find it, it was on the website.
Do we have the listing of appointments that we appointed, um, in July? I can look and see if I can find them.
It was. I always look at it on the pa- on our website and I don't see it.
So I have, um.
Okay, well, I'm sure I have it in my. Okay, um. Gloria's off, right? She the one that's off now?
Yes.
Okay, it's a, it's an appo- oh, she's still on there, though.
Yeah. Does an associate have to be appointed?
No, we don't, we don't have any right now. There would be, three, twenty-four, twenty-five, the next, the ne- it would be twenty-twenty-three. Yeah. I'm looking at all the appointments as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, that are until June of twenty-twenty-three and the, the, um, vacancy. And when I did all of these appointments, I staggered them, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. And so the next one would be twenty-three again.
So then I would make a motion to appoint Ned Kelly, the council on aging for Hardwick, with the term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
Perfect.
So it was moved by Kelly, seconded by Rob. Any other discussion? Hearing, uh, I'll call the rolls. Uh, Julie is yes, Kelly?
Yes.
Rob?
Yeah.
Oh, great, so, um, you'll reach out, um, Nicole to Ned and let him know the appointment and ask him to go in front of the clerk to be sworn in?
Yep, I'll write him a letter.
Great. Thank you, thank you both.
Thanks, and that he's appointed, okay? So tomorrow, I'll get him a letter and then he'll have to be sworn in by Ryan and then he can participate. So he should be able to participate by next Thursday. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, you're, you're welcome to stay, um, we're gonna do the rest of the meeting, Ryan can also come.
Okay, okay, all right. Sure.
So the next item on the agenda, visitors' comments. Is there anyone who has a comment, um, about something that is not gonna be addressed on, addressed on the agenda tonight?
That's okay, just like that.
If you do, can you unmute yourself? Nicole, do you see anyone who wants to mention anything, visitors' comments?
No, I don't see any hands up.
Okay. Um, under old business, uh, board of health meeting relative to the loss of Lester B O H agreements and impacts? I think we lost Nicole for a moment.
Sorry, I'm back.
Um, so we're on the board of health meeting relative to loss of Lester B O H agreements and impacts?
Mm-hmm, um, I reached out to Stan to, uh, meet with me and Julie or meet with the board and I didn't hear anything back from him. Um, and then I saw him and he said that they have, they have, um, they're happy that they have canceled with Lester and they hired another agent that they'll use on an as-needed basis. That's it.
So, um, I, I think, um, you know, as the board, we signed that agreement, so I think we sort of need to bring some closure to that and we've not discussed it. I, I understand that, you know, he's, they're going their own course, but we really, I mean, the board signed that agreement. And I think, um, at least for me, I sort of feel like it's a bit of a loss, losing Lester and their expertise. Um, as well. Uh, Kelly and Rob, thoughts on that? Do we wanna reach back out to Stan and ask him to meet with the board? Um, I can reach out to Stan, but, uh, we can let it go. What, what's your, what's your thoughts?
Honestly, my thoughts are, we've asked him to meet more than once, more than twice. Uh, I don't think that they're interested in meeting. And I, I, I do agree with you that I think it's a loss that, um, that we don't have the collaboration of the board, of our board of health with Lester. Um, I think, you know, that, that could have been a good thing, but, um, I don't, I don't know as if we're gonna get that meeting to happen. And that's unfortunate. And maybe on a board level, we write Lester, you know, a letter stating just that.
I'd like to, um, have you spoken to, um, I know in the, the, um, in their, uh, letter to us terminating the agreement, um, which terminated January thirty-first, correct, Nicole?
Yeah.
They said if there were some, um, change in circumstances that they'd be willing, can we confirm that that's the case? Um, and, and the other question I have is how are, how is the board of health paying this person out of? What, what funds do they have?
We do have, they have a line item that we, for salary, that I cut in half, um, because we had this agreement. So last year it was like thirteen thousand and we cut it down to six or seven, um, just to have in there to not let it go completely away. But, um, you know, possibly, uh, just for some extra support for, you know, uh, 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 maybe something that Lester might need down the road, I just wanted to keep it in there, um. So they're paying for that.
We were supposed to keep it funded also. Lester was supposed to act as like a supplementary, that's per, per the agreement.
So, um, the person that they're contracting with, is this a, is this a, is this truly a contractor?
Um, he's a certified agent.
Okay. Okay, um.
We're gonna have to realize that we have to completely fund that line item for the upcoming year.
And let's say continue to use the person on a contract basis like they are now. Uh, you know, um, is there any impact to us, Nicole, of, um, from a grant perspective and availability for other grants? That, that this is sort of, I just wanted, are there any other ramifications we have by Lester terminating on us? Is this gonna, I guess, reflect badly on us anywhere else?
I don't know that it's necessarily going to hurt us, but it's not gonna help us when Grant, when Lester writes the grants. Um, you know, and they were looking to do a few, like even our, um, opioid money, we don't have a lot, but, you know, they're looking to pool it, possibly get another staff member, um, other, other grants to help all the towns that, you know, we're not gonna be involved in anymore. And there's no staff in, in here, in town here to, you know, conduct any of that business. But Lester has, has said to me personally that if the chair changes, then they are very much willing to come back to the table.
Okay, well, um. Let's sort of leave this on, um, let's sort of leave this, um. I don't know, I have to sort of think about it. I, you know, the bigger issue is we don't have a working relationship with our board of health, which is a problem. Um, we've asked to meet several times and, um, it's not happening. So that, that's concerning to me, um, that there's some, you know, there's a breakdown in, uh, communication between us and it sounds like you as well with the board, um, which is, you know, we all have to work together, so. Um, I will reach out to Stan myself and see if we can, um, we can meet. Um, again, I, I think it's important, do they participate in your department report, uh, department meetings, Nicole?
Judy was at our last one, my last one.
Okay, all right, so I guess we'll let that sit for now and with a further follow-up at some point. Are you okay with that, Kelly and Rob? I don't think we have much of a choice. I mean, I can reject it and, we can't, we can't force it. Okay.
I wa- I would agree and, um, it is an elected position, so it's possible that someone could run for that position too, which would change that board. That board has not been very, had quite a few complaints, kind of by the same people. But I don't, we haven't been able to discuss that either with, with the board, so. I, I don't know what the solution is. They obviously don't have to answer to us, they're elected. But it would be nice and a good faith effort if they would work with us. Anyhow.
Agreed. Mm-hmm, I agree with that also. All right, let me try again and see if we can get the dialogue going, um. Uh, next item is the condemned structures on Church Street and, um, Nicole, could you want to give us an update on that?
So I am aware that Tex had gone through extensive, um, work to, you know, try to get them into compliance. Tex meaning the board of, former board of health agent. Um, there are a very large file on one of the parcels in the board of health office. There's a smaller file also in the board of health office, to which I asked the board of health to give me an update on what it is. Everything, most of it says confidential. I saw a few things, um, that, you know, it, it put the board of health, you know, by and through the town of Hardwick against the parcel owner. And there was a receivership, the rece- the receivership go to the board of health. What happens after that? I don't know any of this. Um, so Stan is under the impression, who I spoke with earlier, um, that if there's no inhabitants in there, then it does not sit in the jurisdiction of the board of health. I simply said, I was at, I know you have extensive files, I just wanted an update. Because if we have to go through the legal system to either acquire, condemn, remove, whatever we have to do, uh, I'd, I'd like to not have to do the work twice. I'd like to not have to pay the attorneys, if we've already paid them, to do certain steps, because there are steps you have to take to be able to have the authority to just go in there and whatever, take them down, condemn them, lean it, whatever we have to do. And so he's under the impression that since nobody lives there, nobody wants to live there, that it's not his jurisdiction, that it belongs to the, to the building inspector. And it's his job to go in and see that it's up to code and if it isn't, to condemn it. I don't disagree with him, I was just trying to get, you know.
So those buildings both have huge red Xs on them. The prior building inspector, I believe, condemned them already, Nicole.
So I'm gonna talk to Bill tomorrow, who again, as we all know, is just very part-time for us. We don't, you know, our contract basically says he'll do our inspections. This is a little bit above and beyond, but I'm hoping that, you know, when I talk to him, he'll agree to, uh, do a little extra work for us and, uh, try to, you know, help us along here, um, the chapter one forty-three process, which is condemning it through the, through the building department. Um, the, the, the most unfortunate part is that all the files are just somewhere. Because there, I don't know if there was really good record-keeping or if it's somewhere that Bill doesn't know because he wasn't here before. Um, also, there's a lot of things in the pod, there's things up against walls, so nobody can get in them if they're confidential. Um, it's really been such a struggle not having town hall put together. Um, but I, I will, I'll work with him tomorrow. The, all I can say is that the board of health has, uh, washed their hands of it. So we're not gonna get any help from them, so I'm gonna have to go a different avenue and just try to seek, seek it through the, through the building department. Um, and, yeah, and they were, the board of health was at my meeting, Judy, um, that I had for the department head meeting last week. Um, but today Stan told me about a class-two license dealer that is in the west part of town that has several code violations and I did not get that update from Judy. So I don't know, um, if they're not ready yet or what, but they, they're doing some work. I mean, so I don't know if Judy didn't know or what, but, uh, Stan did say that they, you know, so I know they're doing something. They, they did go out and do an inspection on a business, so. Um, just wanted to follow up with, I don't know exactly what their role is and what they're doing on a daily, but I know that they are doing something.
So it sounds like we need to figure out really where this is in the process. Um, I, I remember too, Kelly, I know that was under when you were, you were chair, um, that the buildings were condemned and I think because there was an absentee landlord, um, we had to reach out to the landlord and I think there was a procedure, um, for the town taking it, um. So if, I, I, I guess, Nicole, it sounds like you're on the right track going to the building inspector. If it's not his jurisdiction, we need some direction from either town council or whoever. If it's a board, determined to be a board of health jurisdiction, then we've gotta have the board of health. You know, I think once we figure out where it is in the process and what the jurisdiction is, then we'll have to move forward. But it sounds like this has got to continue to stay on our radar as we get more information.
Yeah.
Kelly or Rob, anything else on this?
Not, that's, that's about all I know on it.
Okay.
I, I just remembered, I do remember Tex talking to us about it and basically they are condemned through the building inspector. But the town would have to foot the cost to take them down.
Mm-hmm.
And that's really where it was at, was how we were gonna deal with either taking them down or get rid of them. So, I mean, there should be something either with the building inspector or the board of health that has already done most of the legwork. But. I, I do remember, a lot of this is already taken care of already.
It was. I remember, I remember hearing Brianna and the police went there and condemned the buildings.
That's what I did, I didn't want to start over. I didn't want to pay the thousands of dollars to start over if we've already done it.
Can we reach out to Brianna and ask her what her recollection is, at least where, maybe we can start and see if she recalls where, where the process was. At least we can start there and if it was based on her recollection, I mean, that is a, a period of time ago, so. I can't remember what I had for lunch yesterday, so if she doesn't remember, we can't, uh.
There's a big file on eighteen to twenty and there, it's K P Law, took them to court. You know, said the receiver shall do this, the receiver shall do that. Um, I don't think it explicitly, explicitly says the board of, I didn't get to read it because it was, um, Stan was just holding it. Um, but I do believe that it common sense tells you that if the board of health was taking them to court, then the board of health was becoming a receiver. Um, so if, if all that's been done, then we can just take them down. And the building inspector through that one, chapter one forty-three process, um, has the authority to shut down roads, to shut downtown roads, state roads, shut it down if you have to, to get it down. I don't know how much it costs, I don't know, I don't know anything about that. But I know there's a process for us to be able to do it. Bill Cole's raising his hand, but.
Yeah, just, just a, a thought. So why are we not able to see that file?
Um, it says confidential, so he was just.
If the town has paid for K P Law to provide services, that is public information for, maybe confidential? I would press him to look at that file.
So Julie, Judy, Judy gave me the keys to the file cabinets. So tomorrow I can go in and pull the file out because I need to contact K P Law. I need to see if this attorney, um, is even working for K P Law anymore. But I'm sure that they have a whole Hardwick folder, you know, in K P Law and, and then they have their addresses, I, I would imagine, so they probably have all the documentation.
Right, so let, let's do a little bit more work and if, um, we need to see what we can find and then you're, you're on the right track with going to K P Law. And maybe if we can also just tap into Brianna to see if she has any recollection of where it was in the process. Bill, did you have a question or comment?
Yes, thanks. I, uh, I do recall Tex talking about this, um, I think several years ago anyway. Um, but I don't, what I don't recall is if the same, if the two properties are, I think they're different owners, but I wanted to ask that, and are they in arrears for taxes as well?
Yes and yes, two separate owners, very much in arrears.
Okay, so one way or another, I guess, one option to figure out how to do it is to take the properties and auction them off or sell them or something, or demolish them, which is expensive. Okay. It would be nice to see something, something better there for sure.
Anything else on that? No. Okay, so you'll keep us updated on that, Nicole?
Yep.
All right, I just stepped away to get a tissue. Sorry. Um, okay, so, um. Next item on the agenda is the police storage container. We have, um, we, um, the chief had talked to us about this prior and we had asked them to get, um, three quotes. This, these are the containers for evidence, since, I believe, um, since the, um, part of the evidence is stored in the town hall and, um, there's some concerns, I think, with, uh, water damage and such. Nicole, am I right in that?
Yeah.
And then accessibility, um, they've got evidence in multiple locations. Um, so we have, um, we have a memo from the chief in your packet about three, um, quotes for the, a twenty-foot container. Do we know, um, do we recall where they were gonna put this? Were they gonna put this on lower road?
On, on lower road, yeah.
Okay. Kelly and Rob, did you guys have a chance to look at the quotes?
I did.
I think the recommendation was, um, with the three quotes, was Island Industries, because they're local?
Correct. And they're relatively all in mind cost-wise, so.
Right. And I'm presuming this would come out of ARPA money?
Right, yeah, that's what we had talked about initially.
Yep.
I'm o- I'm okay with this, I don't have anything.
Anything on this, Rob?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Do we already give them, do we already support this or?
No, we asked for quotes.
Like advisement, all right.
Yeah.
I think we talked about, you know, acknowledging the need for it, but that we wanted three quotes and I think it's where we're. So I think we were informally, probably in support of it, asking for additional quotes, just to be sure we're covering. Um, um, I don't have a problem with it either. Can we make a note for the next agenda, Nicole, to talk about, give an update of where, what we've spent for ARPA?
Yes, I actually just asked that from, um, Laurie today and I'm just getting the emails now, so I can forward that to you.
That'd be great. Um. Yeah, yeah, I'd love a motion, thank you.
Okay, um, I would make a motion to, um, use ARPA funds for a twenty-foot container for the police department, uh, for a total amount of five thousand three hundred and thirty dollars from Island Industries out of Brookville, Mass.
Out of. Did you say out of ARPA money?
I did.
Okay, sorry, I missed that. Sorry, Rob.
I sta- I started with that, sorry.
Okay, I, I cut out a little bit, so I didn't hear that part.
I'll second that.
Thank you, sorry to cut you off, Rob. Um, so a motion was made by Kelly and seconded by Rob, any other discussion? And the motion is to purchase the storage container, twenty-foot storage container from Island Industries for five thousand three hundred and thirty dollars out of ARPA money. Um, so I'll call the roll. Julie is yes, Kelly?
Yes.
Rob?
Yeah.
Okay, so motion carries, thank you. Um, other old business, is there anything else, anything that we need to talk about under other old business?
I don't know if it's old, but the three new connections?
Right, Nicole, well, that probably would be under new business and we could take that under, um. Nicole, um, messaged to each one of us a little bit ago, um, for new, um, these are new. These are new. Excuse me, new sewer. Um, so do we want to take this under, um. When we're talking about the, um, the sewer, the project change order, just take this under that item since it's a sewer business? Do we want to address it now under new business?
Either way, it's fine.
Okay, are, are we comfortable with voting on this? You, you all received it just a little bit before the meeting for the three new connections.
Right, that we have to fill them out.
Yes.
Yep.
So the total, um, is one thousand seven hundred fifty-six dollars fifty-nine cents. Is that correct, Nicole?
That's correct.
Um, for the three connections?
Yep, yep. I, um, this should have been in your packet, but Angie was out all week sick last week and I didn't see it. So she's already done the bills with the due dates and the dates and.
But these bills will then go out again to be due in May. So I think we probably want to vote on the full commitment. No?
I'll have, I will have another commitment again in April.
Okay, we voted on the six-month commitment, I think. Okay, so I think, uh, is that right? And then we'll have to vote. I think we have to vote on them every time.
Yep.
Okay, we used to, yeah, okay.
Did you do it once a year? Because if you do it once, that's fine too.
But.
Okay.
Consistent with, if we only did the six months initially, then that's fine.
I think we did, but maybe we can just check on that. Um, so this is to catch them up for the first billing.
Yes.
Rob, are you okay with voting on this at this point?
Yep.
Okay, so we had three, um, they were three. Um, sewer bills, total amount of one thousand seven fifty-six fifty-nine, or these are new connections?
That is my understanding. They're either new connections or they.
Yes, they are.
Okay, great.
Okay. Is there a motion to, um, accept, um?
So I would, I would make a motion to approve the sewer commitment for the three additional hookups. In the amount of one thousand seven hundred fifty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents for the first. Um, for the first bills.
Moved by Kelly, seconded by Rob. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the rule. Julie is a yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Okay, great, motion carries. Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you.
Um. Anything else that we want to address under old business? Okay, under new business, um, the Q drug, permission to place purple ribbons around town for substance awareness. Uh, next weekend, or two weekends, sorry. No, that's next weekend, isn't it? It's next weekend. Um, and then remove them March twelfth. We all have an email in our, I think in our packet. I think we've allowed this every year.
We have.
I don't have an issue with it?
I don't either.
I'm good with it.
I'm just wondering, I mean, if we, if we have the ribbons up, but do we do enough, I mean. Do we do enough as a, a town to promote it? I know, I don't know if, I know Q drug does a bunch, but is there something we should be doing?
We could put something maybe on our, our Facebook page and, and the website to just make people aware of why they're, why they're up. At a point, wouldn't be a bad, bad idea.
Okay. And then maybe, um, link to Q drugs. A link to Q drug, so if they want to somehow participate or. I'm sure Q drug is always looking for volunteers or maybe some financial support or something.
I think that's a good idea.
Rob, you okay with that?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, um, it looks like in the email, it says that Eagle Hills is doing their celebration the following week. Do we know what that is, Nicole?
I do not know. I have no idea.
It's sort of interesting.
Put Eric Fleming's on here.
I am not sure.
Is that something you could find out with Eric? Cause maybe if it's something. Um, you know, I don't know what the celebration is, but if somehow we can participate or if someone wants to participate, we can.
Sure, I'll find out tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on Q drug? So you'll let them know, Nicole?
Yeah.
Great. Hydrant abatements, that is in your package also, so if you remember, um. When our former town, uh, Bill, did you have a question relative to Q drug? Bill had his hand up. I don't know if that was from before. Are you, are you sat, Bill? Do you have a question or a comment?
Not on that subject. I, I had something about the website I wanted to ask, but I'll wait until you think it's time.
Yeah, we're, we are gonna talk about the website, so we can get to that at some point when we're there. Um, hydrant abatements, so if you remember when our former town administrator left. Um, we realized we weren't billing for hydrants and, um, we sent bills out for hydrants in the tune of eight thousand fifty dollars. And they've been sitting out there, I think probably for two years. And, um, it never got, um, given to the tax collector. To do what she needed to do to follow up on these bills, so, um. I think it's with the recommendation of the town account that we get rid of these. Um, there's been no contact, no one's made attempts to pay. I'm not sure we know the right people to even reach out to relative to this. Um, I did mention to Nicole that. Um, we probably should do a little research on the hydrant maintenance and. Uh, I think we did some research and found that it hadn't been built for many, many years. I don't know how many years it was. I thought it was like three or four. But Nicole thought maybe it was like ten. You remember, Kelly or Rob?
I think it was more than three or four. I'm not sure it was ten. And I think, um. Also, uh, Ray might know. The fire chief may know a little bit more and, um. You know. He remembers doing them, yeah.
I think maybe, maybe Rob knows more, but I think that the purpose of billing them, um, hasn't been fulfilled. You know, there, that we were billing them because they were going to, we were maintaining them for their use or, and we haven't been. I think that's what the chief had said. I just vaguely remember something when I first started.
Yeah, it hasn't, I mean, Bob Goodfield was chief the last time I remember us really dealing with this. And I want to say back then, they may not have been paying them regularly either. Maybe one person was paying them and the rest weren't.
Yeah.
We had issues, but.
I mean, if we're not gonna collect these, I don't have a problem with getting rid of them. We don't have a mechanism to collect them. Because they've not been assigned to the tax collector, so, um, I don't have an issue with, um, abating them off. I, I think we should look into whether we should be billing, um, going forward and maybe we can just sort of keep that. Um, maybe with Ray, we can just figure out what should be billed and for what reason it's billed, just so it doesn't fall off the radar.
I would agree with that.
Okay, um, so is there a motion to, um. Abate the, um, hydrant, do you know when those were sent out, Nicole? Like how old these are?
I don't, before I started, like two years. I think you're right. It's around two years.
Right, and that, so that, that just keeps hurting us. It says schedule of outstanding receivables fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Can I just reference that?
Yeah.
As listed, um, I would be moved that we abate the outstanding hydrant maintenance bills in the amount of eight thousand fifty dollars. As listed on the schedule of outstanding receivables fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Second that.
Moved by Kelly, seconded by Rob. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the rule. Julie is a yes. Kelly's?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Great, motion carries. Um, we've already addressed the appointments and procedure, Ned Kelly for COA. Is there anything else under this that we need to address? Nicole, under appointments and procedures?
I just wanted to bring to your attention that, um, the council on aging isn't exactly aware of. How the procedures should go when they are, um. When they are nominating somebody, that it comes to the board of selectmen and it just doesn't, it's not just within their little, you know, their board. To authorize these, these appointments, so I've tried to educate them on that. I am attending their meeting next week. Um, we're gonna go over more policies and procedures, um, and. I also was thinking, in, in the midst of all of these boards and committees. First, I was at the Ware, uh, community development meeting last Monday night. To go over, uh, community develop block grant, CDBG, um. That Ware is applying for with Hardwick, their lead community. And there are a lot of social services, um. That come along with this grant and I was thinking that. It's possible, it's probable that the master plan and the community development. Portion of, of, of committee should probably be split. It, you know, and, and I can tell you about the master plan too, um, but it's master plan slash community development committee. And I think that, and I think that in the coming year, there will be more work to do for community development. There's. Hundreds of thousands of dollars coming in for these social services, whether it's domestic violence or, you know, actual community development. Um, so I think that there should be a community development committee, if not the same. I mean, it can be the same if the same people are on it. I just think it needs to be recognized, um, as a, as a more working board. And, um, the master plan committee, the chairman of the planning board came in and said, you know. They were working on the master plan, they were working on, you know, the whole kit and caboodle. And to just leave it with them and when they have formal appointments and, and when they have moved forward, they'll bring them forth to. The, um, board of selectmen for approval. So they just kind of said, you know, don't worry about the master plan right now. We've got, we'll, we'll handle it. On our, our end at this point, and then they'll bring it to the board of selectmen when it's time for the formal appointment. And then I also am thinking that we could probably use a building committee.
So we have, we had a building committee in place that needs to be resurrected, I think. I'm not sure, I don't recall if we appointed the building committee in June when we did our appointments, um.
We didn't.
Because it hasn't been, um. So, um. Let's take the master plan slash CDBG, so, um, we still need to do some work on the. I think, well, so let's talk about the master plan committee, so, um. Can you give us an update on that, Nicole, on where that stands?
Yeah, so, um, there, there's, there's a bunch of interest, right? Of residents to come on to some boards and the master plan implementation committee was originally. The one requested, however, our master plan itself is outdated and needs, you know, it needs to be updated. So we've had a meeting with CMRPC who is going to do a little bit of research. It's very, very expensive to get this master plan updated. But it needs to be done. It's supposed to be done every ten years. Believe me, towns don't do it every ten years, so it's not like it's. You know, Hardwick is doing something that everybody else isn't, um, but. So before the, so that's what we were talking, I was talking about with the planning board chairman was. That before an implementation committee is formed, that a plan needs to be in place and that's not the case right now. So he said, just, you know, again, he's going to, we, I had a meeting, I was with him in the meeting with CMRPC, um, but. So they're gonna look at other opportunities for us to be able to, um, you know, get some sort of grant to be able to update it. Um, and then the implementation committee will come into play. So at this moment, it's just sort of back to the planning board. If anybody has any questions. About the master plan or about the committee or about, uh, getting involved in it, then they're requested to reach out to the planning board. Um, as they, the planning board in towns are typically the proponent in getting either a master plan itself or getting the update. So essentially, it's just, the planning board wants it back in their lap. But this is the, but, and I asked, this planning, master plan slash community development committee, you know, I said. They're not really one in the same. There really should be a master plan committee and then there should be a community development committee, um, working. All the time, like community development will work constantly, where master plan, you know, once it's done, then you have the implementation committee, but that's. More sporadic, where community development can be done, um, frequently. And especially, like I said, this grant coming in from Ware. The only way that Hardwick is really gonna be able to benefit from it is if we have some people helping work on it and re, and having that outreach. Um, so I feel like, you know, not where we'll keep it, but if we don't actively participate. Then we may miss out on some of the opportunity. So I thought that, you know, maybe that plan should, I mean, that committee should be separate. That was my whole thing. So I don't know about the master plan. It's back to, the, the planning board wants it back. You know, starting initially, meeting with, with the agencies to help update it.
Kelly and Rob, thoughts on that?
Yeah, I don't have a problem, um, as long as it keeps moving forward, I guess, you know, it, it has sat very. Um, stagnant for years. And now that there's interest now, um. So I just hope that they move forward and keep digging in to, to, you know, update the plan. Um.
Really sounds like a planning board issue, if that's where it's supposed to be, so. So they're ready to bring us back to the town. It's really up to the planning board.
Great, cause I think we determined last time that the planning board was responsible for. The, the committee really came out of. The suggestion of, or the direction of the planning board to the board of selectmen, so, um. All right, so, um, Bill, I see your hand up. Bill, did you have something?
Yes, thanks. Um, a couple of things. One, I just noticed the, uh, the info we were all kind of looking for before. I think about appointments and terms is, is on the main page, but now called town appointments, I believe. And just looking back for a second, you asked about council on aging and I think the two vacant terms are shown there, a twenty-three and a twenty-four. I, I, I overlooked that too, because the title got changed, I guess, but I think that's some of the info we were looking on, looking at. And also, um, it talks about, right, the master plan and community development advisory group and. You're right, of course, that the master plan implementation committee was created by, um. The planning board years ago and never populated with people. Uh, and that isn't where the work was done, uh, before, so maybe that isn't the place to be doing anything now. Um, I certainly hear what you're saying, Nicole, about different committees, maybe with a. Specific focus, you know, about, about community development and such, and maybe the town. Buildings committee needs to be, um, reactivated or re-energized or something as well. But I do think, and I can't speak for many here, but I do think there's a lot of interest in figuring out somehow together. Where the right places are for new, new energy and new, uh, you know, work to be done. To make some of the good things happen that we want to see. And I don't know personally whether revisiting the master plan and updating it is essential. For that, I mean, it, it's a process that, of course, you know, Eric Fleming and Eric Walheim and Don Samick and many others, including me to some degree. Were involved in years ago and it never, it never really became a springboard for doing a whole lot. Um, so, one way or another, I hope, I hope that we figure out how to, how to. one way or another, I hope, I hope that we figure out how to, how to get the right committees empowered to get some of these things done, including getting all the grants we might be able to, and raising funds outside of, you know, the town, you know, in order to get some things done and um, all of that. So I, I don't, I, I guess my thought on that is just that revisiting and updating the Master Plan would probably be another couple of year project like it was when it was created. And I would hope we don't need to go through that again before we can start to make some progress on it. Thanks.
Thanks, Bill. Um, Eric, you had your hand up?
Yeah, so I think I had mentioned this before, CDAC, the Community Development Advisory Committee, was, was an offspring of the MPIC, the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Um, primarily to go after these grants that you had mentioned, like getting from where. And so that's, it morphed into that. There really was a fair amount of work done at the Master Plan Implementation Committee level, which kind of involved the update to the twenty, the two thousand Master Plan. Um, there's a draft of that on the, on the, um, Master Plan link on the town's website. The, unfortunately, when Julie um, Marquette put that on, there was a humongous red draft, uh, red line version of that. And in order for her to put it on, she said she just accepted all the updates. So that it gets a little complicated, but that update needs to be looked at um, thoroughly, because that's not completely accurate. But there was essentially a lot of work done at that point. Um, but the CDAC was, again, an offspring of that, in order to deal with these grants, because the Master Plan Implementation Committee was really not set up to do that. I don't know when that committee was formed or who, who all of us were on it at that time. But if you back up to that date when that committee was formed, then I would just go with that. Um, I, I would also suggest that, you know, not bother to do the Building Committee, because that could fall under the Capital Planning Committee. Um, and that committee was formed back in twenty eleven uh, at town meeting um, to deal with, you know, exactly those kinds of things. Anything over twenty-five grand requires uh, some input from the Capital Planning Committee. Um, and I, you know, Tex was, Tex chaired that. Uh, for a while I was on it, uh, Teresa was on it, uh, well, she was a non-voting member, but then, uh, there were several others. But that didn't go very, you know, that didn't last very long either. Um, uh, just, I'm not quite sure why, but it just didn't last very long. But it exists. And I believe that that is where the majority of these questions about buildings and expenditures and um, that, that's where the focus, I believe, could be. Um, but again, just to reiterate, the Master Plan or the uh, Community Development Advisory Committee was really formed to deal with the grants and the stuff that was coming up uh, where a Master Plan couldn't deal with it. I haven't talked to Eric really about the Master Plan. I know he talked to Nicole about it. Um, if, if you wanna dump it back in the Planning Board's lap, that's fine. Um, I don't know, you know, why you need a separate committee to implement it. I'm not really sure of that. Bottom line is, there really isn't gonna be a whole lot of implementation anyway, because there's no money. So, um, uh, to simplify things, if you wanna do that, that probably makes some sense. I think the key, again, the key uh, committee would be uh, Capital Planning. That's all I gotta say.
Nicole, how, um, how do other communities handle the CDBG stuff? Do they have their own, does where have its own CDBG?
Actually, I didn't look to see if they have an, um, a Community Development Director or an employee. I know that was the committee that was at the meeting. I didn't look to see if it was staff or not. Um, a lot of communities, it depends. I mean, the last one I worked in, it was completely funded by uh, the position itself was completely funded by a Community Development Block Grant. So they'd get like nine hundred thousand dollars a year, and they'd be able to build a park, they'd be able to help homes, and they would be able to fund the, the office. So, um, you know, and that's even this one that where's going through. I believe PVPC is doing most of the work, and there's like two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for administration fees. So it's like one point six million. A lot of social services, we're getting a road done. Um, but um, I think that, I, I think that, I think Capital Planning and Community Development are just separate. Um, Capital Planning is for the money that you have in a pot that you're able to either upgrade or, you know, think about the future and, and doing bigger purchases. Um, and I, and then I think the commi, I'm, I'm sorry, Capital Planning versus a Building Committee. Like, the reason that I think it's defunct is because there hasn't been any money for capital, let's face it. But a Buildings Committee, you know, as I'm going through now, you know, on my own building and all of this flooding, I mean, I could have had some help with this. Um, you know, we can, we, I'm looking now at a green community grant to possibly either do a new um, boiler-chiller system in this building, a new roof, something, you know, um, we had a bunch of um, boilers fail in four of our, our buildings, so I'm working on getting all of that up to code. Um, you know, the, the townhouse has some issues there. So I just feel like if I could use some help with, you know, the, not day-to-day, but you know, the continuous maintenance of the town buildings and keep them on our forefront and be able to discuss them, you know, maybe monthly or something like that. This one's this old, that, you know, we're looking at this, that, you know, capital, I, maybe they could be combined. Um, or if the capital wants to work with me for ongoing issues that ha, that don't involve any capital money, um, that would be great too. I just, I feel like we could definitely use um, you know, kind of a thumb on the pulse of all of our assets and our buildings.
I think, you know, I think the Capital Planning Committee can be both strategic and preventative. Um, you know, the fact that we don't have money, you, you know, the fact that we don't have money to, 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 you know, um, make major upgrades to buildings. Things take time. We've had, you know, we've had the discussion about, um, back when I, I was on the Finance Committee a long, long time ago, and Kelly and Rob, we talked about the need for, um, you know, strategic planning and figuring out what to do with these buildings. We may not have the funding, but, you know, this group I would envision would be, um, strategic about finding grants, strategic about uh, what are things that we could apply for, do some research, but I, I think they could also encompass the existing buildings. It doesn't necessarily need to be new buildings, it can be existing buildings. And, um, you know, ultimately, if we don't maintain them, then we're gonna have a problem, and they will have to be replaced, and it will become a capital item. So I, at least my opinion, I think that committee could tackle existing and future. Um, we've had the constant discussion about the need for a new police station. If we do not start talking about these things now, we're gonna be in the same position five years from now and no closer to a new station, or a new public safety complex, or a new whatever. A new roof for the school, a new whatever. I mean, there's gotta be a group there that sort of handles these. And they don't necessarily, I mean, you know, maybe they meet on a periodic basis to talk about what the goals are, strategic goals are. Um, in looking at who was, who was on that committee, um, you know, it, it's a, a member of the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator, treasurer, accountant, a representative from, um, the assessors group, Finance Committee, an at-large and School Committee representative. I mean, I, I, again, I don't think there's any reason why. These, these individuals have already been appointed. Uh, there are vacancies. No one was appointed for the, from Board of Selectmen. No one was appointed from Finance, and no one was appointed from the School Committee. Um, but there's no reason that this committee was appointed by us in June. There's no reason this committee can't meet. And, you know, we can come up with, um, you know, uh, what this group is charged with for direction. I, I don't, I think that's different, though, than necessarily the CDBG. I don't know, maybe it does fit in.
No, sorry, that was completely separate, uh, Community Development separate from building and capital planning.
So we have Master Plan with the CDBG. So are you, you're saying that there's nothing happening? There's nothing happening, not, no need to do anything master planning related. So do we wanna just retitle that committee to um, or repurpose that committee for CDBG purposes at this point? Kelly, Rob, do you guys have any thoughts on any of this? Other than your head probably wants to blow off?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was just thinking. Um, I just, I wonder the, you know, the actions that you need to take to change it, or I know Eric mentioned, you know, it was formed, one, I don't know, whichever, the Capital Planning Committee was formed at a town meeting. I mean, this may have to go to town meeting if we're ta, talking about re, you know, kinda realigning things.
I think the Capital Planning Committee is already in existence, and I, I think maybe we look at, the, the Board of Selectmen.
The purpose of it?
The Board of Selectmen a, appoints that committee. That was appointed by us.
Right.
So we can change the direction of that committee at any time. So if the, if the direction of the committee, if we decide that we'd like this Capital Planning Committee to look at future expansion and also preservation of existing buildings that we have, that can be under the charge of that committee.
Well, doesn't the Community Development Advisory Committee still exist? I mean, it was, it was formed, and it was people were appointed to it. It, when did it die? And when was it created and when did it die? Um, along with a lot of other things like Master Plan and whatnot. Capital Planning even sort of just died on the vine, even though Capital Planning exists because it was the town meeting deal back in twenty eleven. But the question is, you already have this committee called the Community Development Advisory Committee. You could easily lump the building into that. Um, it doesn't have to deal necessarily with Master Plan. It could deal with grants, the CBG stuff.
Right.
Which is what we did years ago. So why, why reinvent the wheel? I would just find out, find the charge for that committee and just reappoint it.
They were reappointed, Eric.
Huh?
They were reappointed.
The Community Development one?
Yes.
No.
Yeah.
Not since I've been here.
It's on our list of the appointments by the Board of Selectmen, as mentioned by, if you look on that, um, web link that Bill was kind enough to find, if they're on there. We appointed them.
I think the problem is it got lumped together with Master Plan in that language, in that, that list. I think it says Master Plan slash Community Development Advisory Committee. Am I correct?
Yes, but I think that's how it was created.
No, I don't, no, I, I would disagree with that. I would, I don't know how you do it, but I would dig back. I can try to look in my files, but I would dig back to find out when uh, Community Development Advisory got formed. Because it really became the same group, but it was a separate committee.
Nicole, why don't we, can we ask Ryan to look back in this too? Look back through the minutes and see when this happened? And if we need to retitle this or repurpose that, I don't, I don't believe that we should be combining Community Development Advisory and Capital Planning. Um, I, I think Capital Planning is more, my opinion, and you, you guys can, Capital Planning is more town-focused in terms of what our assets are and what we need and what we need to do going forward. That's my opinion. Um, but, and then CDBG is more broader scale, I think.
I would agree.
So I would, I would agree that we still, we still need two committees. There, I believe they're both active. They've both been appointed. So there's no reason that the Capital Planning Committee can't meet. We would, the Selectmen maybe, why don't we put it on our next agenda, Nicole, next month, um, next meeting agenda to, um, appoint the representatives that are missing on that group? And I believe there are Selectmen, um, Finance, School Committee. Um, I think those were the three. And Eric, you're listed at the Representative Large. Is that something, you know, if you wanna continue to stay on that?
If you guys wanna find somebody that, um, you think you can work with, that's fine with me. I don't have to be on it. I've just been on it forever.
So can we work on that, Nicole, and also the Master Plan CDBG? Try to get some resolution on that for the next meeting.
Okay, so I'm not sure. I, I'm completely in agreement with you on the, the Community Development and Capital Planning slash, you know, building are completely separate. Um, but what I'm, what I'm not sure what you want me to do is Master Plan. I might, do you think, I mean, do you want me to reach out to the Planning Board Chairman and see if I should just delete Master Plan and just keep Community Development Advisory Committee up here?
Just, just separate.
Well, I, 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 I'd like to check with Ryan first and just see how it was created and because maybe it's really not titled that, and it ended up on the sheet like that.
I think that's what happened.
Let's just see exactly how it's titled, and then we'll figure out the course of action on splitting it.
Okay.
Kelly and Rob, is that okay?
That's fine.
Do we know who Rod Leahy is? Lehi? Leahy?
Yeah, he's no longer in town. I don't believe it's correct.
No, he moved out of town.
So there'll be two vacancies then? If anybody's interested in that.
On the CDBG?
As far as I can see, I mean, it's Master Plan slash Community Development Advisory Committee. Uh, but there's Eric, there's Rod Leahy, Lucinda Childs, and Harry Commerford, and a vacancy.
So what we, what we approved at the meeting in June was, um, Eric, Lucinda, and Harry.
Well, and Rod, but.
Rod was not on this list.
I, I, I don't, I don't know what, maybe I'm looking at a different list. I'm looking at something on my computer. Not, I didn't find it. I still didn't find it on the website, so.
So if you, if you go.
Looking at a different list.
If you go, um, to the homepage and you go to Information and Notices, it's on the right-hand side at least halfway down. It says Town Appointments twenty twenty-two to twenty-one.
Got it, yes. Yeah, that's what I was looking for, okay.
So Rod, Rod is not on there.
Okay, good, excellent. Two vacancies.
Okay, so let's follow up on that for the next meeting. Um.
Okay.
Bill, you had your hand up?
Yes, thanks. Um, I'm, I know a lot of this confusion started when we, um, when I asked to be appointed to what I thought would be important, the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and when when Lisa Condit was appointed to the Master Plan Community Development Advisory Committee, even though she thought she was gonna be on the other one. So I, I don't know where, where the two of us, and, and there was other interest you had in the same sort of effort from, I think, Lisa Cohen and maybe another, um, I don't know where those, whether the, those spots exist to, to consider filling with, with these volunteers. And I wanted to ask Eric Fleming if, um, I thought, maybe I'm mistaken about this, that that the Master Plan Community Development Advisory Group or Committee, um, position that he had with a term of twenty-three, that I thought he'd resigned because he wanted to focus on Capital Planning Committee. Maybe I'm mistaken about that. So I am wondering what, how many spots are available? Um, eh, who's interested in them, and then for the Capital Planning Committee, which does seem very important, um, I think Eric, Eric, I believe you're on that too. Um, and that's good, but there's not a position on that committee for anyone from the Planning Board. It's an at-large seat that I think Eric is in now. So I'm wondering whether that committee is, whether that's the full list of people there, that there's no one from Planning Board that would be on that committee and so forth. So I know, I know it's a lot of things to sort out here, but uh, I think this, the structure would be good to get in line as we uh, get moving.
Well, on, at the January twentieth meeting, Selectmen's meeting, I sent a letter in, resigning from Master Plan. Um, although I wrote master plan slash Community Development Advisory Committee, which is fine. Um, making room for fresh blood. Um, doing this for 20 plus years, it's time for me to go. Um, so that makes room for that. Uh, again, I, I would, I would separate master plan from CDAC anyway, but I believe that it already exists, but that this needs to be clarified, but yes, make room and I'd be happy, I don't need to be on, um, uh, capital planning, um, if somebody wants to step up and do it, that's fine with me.
So why don't we do this? So Nicole, can we put it on our next agenda that we have to accept Eric's resignation? Cause he's an appointed individual. Um, why don't we all come with our thoughts for next meeting on, um, let's clarify these committees? And let's, um, Kelly, Rob and myself in the pool, we'll come with our thoughts and who should be on this committee? And let's get them properly structured, make sure we're considering who should be, who we think should be included from the departments. And then, um, once we have these created, we can address the interest that's there. But until we know what these are and who should be on them, once we come up with who should be on them, we can't, you know, that's the starting point. So let's continue to move this forward for a discussion next time and then let's come up with a structure, what they should be, and then we can figure out. Um, in the meantime, if there is some interest, you can send it to Nicole, uh, but are we okay with that, Kelly and Rob, for next time?
I'm fine.
Okay, we could talk about this all night and not get anywhere, so.
Right.
Okay. Um, moving forward sewer project change order, Nicole?
Um, so the change order was just the change of location. So we went through and, uh, got the grant of easement and the easement agreement executed. And now we're moving forward, um, with a pre-construction meeting in early March for the new location, which is just north of the common where it was originally located.
Thank you, Nicole, anything Kelly or Rob on this?
No, I have the, I'm fine.
You sure you're fine?
Yeah.
Um, Rob, anything on this?
I think we've, we've pretty much killed that thing. I think we're good.
Yeah, yeah. The horse is already dead and we beat it several times after, so. Um, no pun intended, sorry, that was really a bad pun, sorry about that. After it came out, I thought, gosh, I should not have said that. Um, yep, a little too soon. Um, um, okay. Tax map maintenance proposal?
This is just a housekeeping order, this is typical. Um, this is something from the assessor and I believe we do it every year, so, um, yep, she gave it to me on the day of our last meeting, so I, this is the one that I had requested that we just put off to this meeting so I could have it as an agenda item, I thought it should be on there as an agenda item, so, um, it's nineteen hundred dollars for GIS maintenance. I don't know how everybody else thinks of the GIS for the town, but it's not very user friendly to me, like to see something a little easier to navigate. But anyway, so this is, uh, just something that you have to approve each year.
And the cost is nineteen hundred, Nicole?
Yep.
And Jen has budgeted this already, so.
Yep.
You want a motion, Julie?
Please.
I would make a motion to accept the tax map, tax map maintenance proposal for the town of Hardwick from CAI Technologies, um, the maintenance agreement is nineteen hundred dollars with an additional twenty dollars per building added or changed if, uh, building footprints are necessary.
This is for calendar 2020, sorry, just a clarification, this is for calendar 2023.
Correct. Yep.
I second that.
Uh, so moved and seconded, uh, moved by Kelly, seconded by Rob, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the rule, Julie is yes, Kelly?
Yes.
Rob?
Yeah.
Okay, motion carries. One-day license for the Stone Church?
The Stone, Stone Church is having, um, an Irish fundraiser, Irish luncheon fundraiser on Ju- on March 11th of 2023 and Stone Cow is, um, going to be like doing the alcohol, so they just need a one-day license. But the Friends of the Stone Church is pulling out the permit, pulling out the license.
Do we have, I, I know when we do the beer tent for the Hardwick Fair, we have a lot of paperwork that goes with it. Do we have all the paperwork for this, Nicole?
I do not have it yet, but I told her that she can't have her license until she submits it.
Right, like they have to prove their, like, surf safe and.
Tips certified and, yeah, and, uh, and li- liquor liability insurance.
Have we talked to, have they talked to the chief about this or we talked to the chief about this?
I have not.
Uh, it, this is Cheryl, may I speak?
Sure.
Uh, I have talked to the, uh, deputy chief about it, um. He had no problems with what we were planning. Uh, I can certainly get the pa- paperwork to you, we do have the, uh, the insurance.
Do you mean the lieutenant, Cheryl?
Yes.
Okay, the deputy chief is on the fire department. Wanted to make sure that you're talking about the police, I just, we wanted to clarify that you're talking about the police.
Yeah, Kevin.
Okay, thank you. And this is, um, hours that alcohol will be served, two to four, is that what that is?
Yes.
Okay.
And they, you know, they've calculated potentially two beers per person if half, or however many people drink. They're not serving, you know, they're not, it's not as, you know, you can buy as much as you want, it's really limited. Um, it's not, it's not, you know, an all-day event, so I, um.
I don't, I don't have an issue with it as long as they submit all the required, um, approvals and proof.
Agreed.
And that the chief or the lieutenant are, um, okay with this.
We, we normally get that though before we vote on them.
We do, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, I don't want to hold up their event, but I also want to set a precedent.
Yeah, and we should have all the paperwork when we're looking at the application, I agree.
We can put it on the next agenda, it's, they don't, it's not until March 11th, so it can be approved on the next agenda if you want to do that.
Okay, so it doesn't sound like it's an issue, we just want to make sure all the paperwork's in order, Cheryl.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. Thanks, Cheryl. Um, anything under other new business? So I guess I'll just bring up, um, the selectmen roundtables, we've been having the selectmen roundtable, um, sorry, the selectmen's monthly meetings, um, and, um, you know, I think they originally started because attendance at the department head meetings or wasn't a lot of attendance and it's also our way to stay connected to the town employees and for us to be sort of visible to them. Um, we do have one coming up on February 15th, that, um, the time was changed to 2:00 PM because unfortunately I have a client conflict at 4:30, so, um, maybe what we can do at that point, uh, Nicole raised the concern that, you know, it's two meetings for people to attend. Um, and sort of the confusion on, maybe with the town employees on why is this, you know, what's different from a department head meeting versus a selectman meeting? Um, I think it's good to be in front of them, um, you know, whether we do it monthly may be too much. Um, this likely would be my last one, so I would like to continue to hold, um, this one. Um, and then if we decide, I don't know if we decide, you know, maybe ask the question at the meeting, is it meaningful? Do you think it's redundant, um, to them? Uh, because if they want the meeting, I certainly don't want to not have the meeting if they want to have that avenue. Um, but maybe if it is too much, we could go to quarterly, Kelly, Rob?
Yeah, I do think, I do think that they're important, I agree with you, to be in front of, you know, the department heads and, and, and for Nicole for that matter too, if there's things that, you know, that come up and, you know, maybe it's not a meeting or and it's something that we can just talk about during that timeframe, you know, it's just an hour, they, you know, we try to keep them casual. I, I mean, I do think that they serve a different purpose, I mean, Nicole's overseeing all these departments and for her to have her department meetings is, is very important. And I think, I agree that for us, it's just, it's a means of being in front of department heads and employees on a more casual level, just to check in with people to see, you know, if there's anything additionally that we can be doing for them. Um, but I'm not opposed to, you know, feeling them out at, you know, one of the next meetings and seeing, you know, if, you know, quarterly or every other month we do them, you know, I'm, I'm open to, to either way.
I'd, I'd agree with you, Kelly, um. I, I think it, it was good, the last one we had, I, I feel like it gave me a chance to see some people and talk to a few departments that I hadn't really talked to in a while and they all gave some feedback about what's going on. That, you know, it's hard for Nicole to give us in her, you know, spiel every meeting of exactly what they're doing, so. To get that update, even if it's, like you said, a couple times a year that each one of us is in there, that's better than not at all.
We agree.
All right, so we'll, um, we'll have the meeting, uh, I'll have the meeting this week and, um, ask the question and see if, um, it's meaningful and if it's meaningful, you know, we can, I'll bring the feedback next to our next meeting and maybe we can make the decision on what we do going forward. Um, anything else under other new business? Anything under, uh, ARPA funding, Nicole, I think we addressed that, right?
Yeah.
Uh, committee reports, I think we, um, well, I think you have the department reports from your department head meeting. Um, Kelly or Rob, anything you want to talk about on that, Nicole or Kelly or Rob, um, you guys have any questions?
No, I read through it, it's good to see a good turnout, so I'm happy about that.
Thank you, me too, this is exactly what I expect, you know, each month to be able to give you. I do, can I just point one thing out? Oh, sorry, Rob, go ahead.
I was just kind of saying, you know, it's nice to see that people have added so much and it seems to be evolving, so.
Yeah.
Thank you departments for going forward.
Did you want to say something, Nicole?
I just wanted to point out the, um, the vaccine clinic that's happening at the townhouse on February 22nd from three to six, uh, it's a, it's a COVID vaccine only. And each individual awards a seventy-five dollar gift card, um, reach out to the board of health because I don't know any other details. There is a flyer that has been put on the website as well. But the link isn't on, the, the link's on the paper, but you can, you can write it down and copy and, and, and go to the link. It's not, the, the flyer doesn't have the link, you know, the, on it, but there is a, a link that you can go to or you can call the board of health and they can give you more information.
Great, thank you. Anything under miscellaneous correspondence, Nicole?
There's just one, um, DPU, the National Grid actually, uh, is having a public hearing. Um, sorry, I didn't really read it that well, it's, um, they're to allow DG facilities to interconnect in and around Brookfield, Hardwick, Collin, Munson, Palmer, Walesware and Warren. Um, it's, this, this notice is on our website as well. So it's, it's gonna start Wednesday, March 8th at 2:00 PM and it's via Zoom, so, um, that'll be on our web, you know, you'll see that from our, from our calendar as well, I believe Ryan put it up there. That was, that was it.
Okay. Um, town administrator report?
Yep, you want me to go through that?
Um, is there anything you want to highlight on it, Kelly or Rob, do you have questions for Nicole or is there anything you want to highlight, Nicole?
Um, I don't know if, um, again, this, I put these on the website if anybody has any questions for the public, but, um, USDA is always at the top, so anything new that I'm doing regarding the sewer project will always be right at the top. Um, we're still reviewing rate studies and betterments to be able to bring in front of you for options at some point. Um, so this Friday I have a meeting. And we, like I had said, we put it as an agenda item that the change order has gone through, everything's, um, going smoothly there. Uh, the second project, which would be the Wheel Right, I always do this, I call it a pump station. Wheel Right. Um, wastewater treatment plant is, is the next project to go for, forbid, probably within the next couple of weeks. And I did want to point out, I believe I may have told you before, but the USDA has approved to pay for our sewer debt. So anything that we have, that we're paying on bands annually, which I don't know, I'd have to ask Jessica, it's, you know, so two million dollar, two million seven hundred thousand, four hundred dollars is what's being, uh, wiped away by USDA. So it's, it's definitely freeing us up, um, for, you know, some extra funding somewhere else. Uh, we are going to a .gov domain, it's sort of been pushed by the state and federal government as lo- along with all of the IT firms and even our insurance who do cybersecurity for us. Uh, it's, it's just much more secure when you have a .gov website than a .com, I don't know how or why. Um, but that is, um, part of it. And I, I now realize or remember that I put here, when I met with the insurance company last month to go over, you know, everything coming for the following year, they said on all of our cellphones, we're gonna have to have two-step authen- authentication. Um, like when I log in remotely, I have on my cellphone an authen- authenticator that I have to put in to, um, you know, to be able to access my computer and they want it, they want us to do it with phones too. So they don't recommend that I use my personal cellphone. But I've been doing it for eighteen months now, so I kind of thought, um, if something happens and they confiscate my phone, then I'll probably ask you guys to buy me one. Um, and then it'll be for work and, I don't know, I don't know, I, I, it's not, doesn't seem like a big deal to me, but it kind of seemed like a big deal to the insurance company who like said, stop answering your phone, you should not be using your personal cellphone for work, um, which isn't really an option. So that's sort of on the forefront of my mind, I don't know exactly what to do with that yet. Uh, we did receive a, a very easily gotten grant, Julie, uh, was, was going through that with me. Um, it's a wellness grant through Maya and we're able to purchase, um, a bunch of equipment. And it's really for employee wellness, so we got break room equipment. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, one of the mart drivers, the newest one, came in and said, is there somewhere for me to eat my lunch? I was like, no, at your desk, like the rest of us. So we were able to purchase tables and chairs and a, in a, in a lounge area, so there's a couch and, and, and chairs and tables and, um, some soft lights and some fake plants and things like that for. um, some soft lights and some fake plants and things like that for, for now that the treasure collector's office is empty, the former treasure collector's office. So um, we, we can put a break room up there and I got some um, picnic tables for possi- you know, hopefully fire department, highway departments, you know, to go outside during the warm months and kind of en- enjoy a break out there. So that's been coming in slowly, I also got stand-up desks, so people, you know, you can sit and stand, so you're just not all, sitting all day long, so. So that's ha- and that's um, the employees are, are happy with that. Um, uh, I think, so the vacant town owned parcels, so we have the White Building down here, which was a former senior center, the Page Building, the Ruggles Hill School. What I also learned when I had my meeting with the insurance company was that they weren't insured, so we, we insured them, uh, basically, you know, not really for contents, but just for the building, but you know, that gets expensive too, and they're falling apart and dilapidated, and maybe this is a capital planning conversation, but I don't know what we wanna do with them, they're just costing us money all the time, again, if we had no insurance on it and something happened, we would be responsible for all of it, for all of the cleanup, for all of the, for whatever happened. Now at least we have some insurance on them, uh, but I don't know what we wanna do with them. Do we want to, I know there's been RFPs in the past, do we wanna try to sell them again? Get them off of, you know, the town's liability.
Well, I think that's something that, you know, we need to discuss and that could be part of the capital planning committee charge on what we do with those buildings. Um, some of them, you know, we have to be, Ruggles Hill, we have limitations there because of what's located there. Um, I mean, I, I think we, not something we're gonna solve tonight, but something we maybe think about wh- what the best group is to sort of handle that. So maybe can we leave that on the agenda for the next time? And Kelly and Rob, we can give that some thought.
Yeah.
Great, the last thing is that the carpeting has finally been installed in all of the offices. So now we, and, and I did, I don't wanna call it a runaround because I'm sure it's legitimate. Um, the, you know, we had that deep freeze for a couple of days, and when that happened, all of these restoration companies apparently got completely backlogged with frozen pipes, et cetera, so now we take the backseat again, so uh, last week I knew they would be done carpeting by today. I asked the restoration company last week to schedule for tomorrow to start coming in, moving all the contents back into all of the offices, so then the foyer can be done. But now they're backlogged, so they're coming on the twenty-seventh, if they can come sooner, they will, but we're looking at this for another two weeks and we're looking at another Zoom meeting. And my hands are, you know, he says, is it okay if we come on the twenty-seventh, I don't know what to say, I wanted to say no, it's not okay, come now, but I, I don't, I've got nothing to say. So here we are, still waiting. But the carpets are in and they look great.
Uh, I think we're sort of at the mercy of availability and timing and things, so it is what it is. Um.
Oh, just one more thing, I do attend Coffee Hour at the Hardwick Berry Senior Center, the first Wednesday of the month at nine o'clock. So please feel free to come in, um, you know, send your neighbor, send your mom, send who, anybody that has any questions, just wants to have conversation, wants to learn about things that are going on. Um, I'd love to see them and have a chat, so that's where I am the first Wednesday morning at nine o'clock every, every month. First Wednesday of the month, sorry.
Great, thank you.
I guess that's it, everything else is pretty much just ongoing and uh, status quo.
So I wanted to talk a little bit about the website, um, I just, um, my email was wrong on the email string that went through, so I just saw this, this afternoon. Um, but we've all been given a link to the um, upcoming website, uh, I know Julie Marquette's um, on tonight and um, coordinating um, with our um, getting this up and running. So Kelly and Rob, if you wanna take a look at the link, I will as well, it's supposed to go live on the twentieth. Um, Ryan also sent us something from his um, uh, um, most recent uh, uh, conference for clerks relative to security and such, um, presuming Julie's seen it, she was copied on it. So, I mean, the goal is to get a functional website, but we also wanna make sure it's secure and, uh, and the way that it has to be. Um, and so, um, Kelly and Rob, if you wanna take a look at it, if you haven't already, I just quickly browsed it, um. I haven't had a lot of time to dig into it, but if there's, I mean, you know, the, the website is um, you know, at, at least from my perspective, you know, should be informative. Um, we should make sure it has on it what we'd like to see on it and um, also maintaining um, you know, an appropriate level of security. Uh, that needs to be there, and presumably, hopefully Julie's helping on that end with her knowledge and, I'm sure she is with her knowledge and expertise. Um, um, so if you guys can reach out directly to Nicole with questions or edits or whatever you think, if there is anything, Julie, did you wanna say anything relative to the website while we're on the topic?
I just wanted to say that if we don't have the dot gov domain by the twentieth, it shouldn't go live until we have that.
So where does that stand Nicole?
It's with our I T and I talked to Julie today and I was supposed to reach out to them and I didn't, I forgot. So I'll have to reach out to C N Geeks.
Okay.
If anybody sees anything that they think is missing or should be there or different, please let me know. Cause I'm in the process of really transferring the old website over to the new website and I keep catching things and missing things, so, a lot.
I, I like that, I like that, I'm actually on it right now, I am paying attention in the meeting, but I thought I would pop on just to look at it. I do, I like the look and feel of it, it looks user-friendly. Um, so I'm excited, I'll be excited to see this. Um, you know, thankfully Bill pointed out where the appointments were on ours, so I could get to it easily, but our existing one, um, uh, although you've done a great job at keeping it up Julie, you know, definitely time for an update, and we just wanna make sure we're, um, you know, it's meaningful and useful and I, I think you're doing a good job at that, so.
Thank you. I agree, I needed an update.
Okay, um, anything, uh, I've, I've lost my agenda somewhere, um, anything? Signatures and approvals, do you have anything for us Nicole?
No.
Okay, anything under Selectmen Roundtable?
I don't think so, I don't have anything Julie.
Rob, do you have anything?
Uh, the only thing I'd like to bring up soon at a meeting, if we can't really deal with it tonight, is building inspector. I really think we need to go meet with Barry and um, get some additional complaints about people trying to get permitting, permits. And what bothers me is if people can't easily get permits, they're not gonna get permits, which is revenue for the town. You're just gonna do things because of its pain. You know, and you wanna get it done, you're just, you're either gonna do it or you're gonna frustrate and not do it, but I don't know if there's something we can do with as a board or give him some help somewhere to help streamline his process, but um, I, I really think it's something we need to address.
Can we um, can we have the people, presumably you're fielding the complaints, people are complaining to you? Or, or, or talking to them about their frustrations?
I can, would you like me to send you an email I just got, or?
Yeah, I mean, they really should come, they really, yeah, should really come to the board and Nicole. Um, Nicole, can we, um, in the past, I know that the representatives, the chair of all the member towns have gotten together to discuss the building inspector, the last one, um, that we attended didn't go so well. Uh, it wasn't anyone on this board who attended it, um, we, we ended up having to write a letter of apology after that. Um, but I, I think we should, eh, eh, any contract that we're involved with, we really should be sitting down at least once a year and see if it's still working. Um, and if we're not getting the service that we need, we need to push for that because there potentially are other communities and we may need to add some more resources, maybe he just doesn't have the capacity to do it. Um.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I absolutely think it's, it's probably that kind of situation and
Mm-hmm.
And I, you know, I don't wanna poo-poo the, the, you know, the building inspector, but if we need to give him some help, we'll, let's do it and so we can keep this moving.
Right. So, um, Nicole, can you reach out to Barry to see if we can, and Rob, can you forward that email to us so we have that? Uh,
Yeah.
And so we have specifics, we can, maybe we can, um, get a meeting together of all of the group and address our concerns. If you have specific concerns relative to, that we haven't talked about relative to the position or what the needs are, it, it's probably a good time because if we need to build something into the budget for support.
We need to do that now.
We need to think about it now. Do we have anybody, um, maybe you can be thinking about this Nicole, do we have anybody in the municipal building in a um, support position now? That could, um, we could increase their hours a little bit and provide some support for building?
I don't know.
I was thinking maybe, I was thinking maybe Peggy.
Yeah.
I don't know, you know, rather than bringing on a new position, we had talked about having a, a common, I, I hate to use the word clerk, cause it, it just has a whole connotation, uh, like a support person. Um, if we could find a support person that could help multiple committees and boards, um, you know, maybe that's something we could, so we're not funding a, a complete new person, but someone who maybe would want five additional hours a week or, you know, whatever it might be.
I think the only issue with that is everybody would be put over the threshold of receiving benefits.
Okay, well, let, let's give it some thought.
I mean, that's definitely been, eh, eh, it's definitely been, um, an issue for Bill. He has said, you know, he says that this is the only town that he doesn't have support in, he has to do all the paperwork and turnovers and all of that himself. Um, he definitely is more, he doesn't, because I have told him you have to help people, if they, this is a customer service industry, if you, if, if somebody needs help in direction, then you need to help them. And he is, he all, you know, he says he works for the state, that he doesn't, you know, I, I'm, I'm sure he works for Barry. Um, but he likes to do the way, he likes to do things the way he likes to do them, and he, he wants people to hire contractors and file the correct permits, and if he gives them, if he has no action on it, he wants them to figure out why, so, you know, I've stepped in a few times for sure to try to facilitate some things, but, um, you know, a little bit of help would probably go a long way.
Can we see if any of the other communities that we share that we're in this agreement with have a support person? If someone's already in that position as, has availability and already understands the position, maybe they'd consider working in Hardwick for a few hours. If they're not full-time in the other community, or even if they are full-time in the other community and have the availability, it'd be, you know, we know they're familiar, if it's someone in that industry or that department that's familiar with it, let's see if we can do a shared service for that support person. Happy to bring it up, if you, if you can reach out about a meeting, um, I certainly will be the one to field it and deal with it and that, ask the question in the meeting if you'd like. Okay. Anything else?
Everyone's brain dead, right, we're Monday after the Super Bowl.
Um, I will, actually, I will just add my two cents as we're talking about all these extras. Um, because our first glance at our budget and we're five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars over, two and a half. So we have a lot of work ahead of us to do, just wanted to throw that out there. On a high note.
What, way, way to kill the.
I was just ready to wish everyone a great Valentine's Day tomorrow.
Well, I just, you know, I think people need to recognize that this is where we start and then now we have to go and try to be very creative about finding this money and, um, you know, we, we certainly.
Adding requests.
Yeah, and we, so we certainly are in need of revenue, so any bit of revenue that we're not getting, because people are struggling to get services, then that, that, that all comes into this, so. Um, we definitely, you know, the foundation needs to be belated, I guess, so that we can continue to, to earn the most revenue that we possibly can. Cause it's clearly needed.
Um, so something upcoming, I'll take off my Board of Selectmen hat for a second, input on my Pathfinder hat. Um, Nicole, there is a March fifteenth meeting coming up. Um, hopefully someone from finance, um, I'm there as a member, the chair of the Pathfinder School Committee, but um, Kelly and Rob, you guys are welcome to attend, that is gonna be the budget presentation. Um, Nicole, I'm sure you'll be getting an invite or you've probably maybe already been made aware of that. Um.
I have, and it's, it's Wednesday the fifteenth.
I believe so, and it's gonna be held at Pathfinder, um, more details to follow. Um, in that meeting, uh, they'll go through assessments and such, so we'll know what our assessments are.
These are refreshments too, I've been to those.
Yes, they do, and they're made by the students, so I'd strongly encourage you to come if you can, I, it's open to, um, finance and school committee, um, sorry. Um, whatever we are, Board of Selectmen members, um, so more details will come out on that, um, I know they've been working diligently on the budget. Uh, but like every other department in town, uh, there's been, you know, I can fairly certain that we can expect an increase, so. Um, but more on that as it comes forward.
We've also been told that somebody's probably applying to Smith this year.
Oh.
At least one individual.
Oh boy, okay.
Okay.
Which I do not have in the budget.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
I'll stop talking now.
Alright, well, um, thanks for all the comments and questions that came up tonight and the input. We have our, certainly have our marching orders for the next meeting, um. I hope everyone has a good Valentine's Day tomorrow, uh, you're not, uh, hopefully you don't have any meetings at night so that you can enjoy time, whatever it is you're gonna do, um, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Kelly, seconded by Rob, call the rule, Julie's yes, Kelly?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Uh, so the meeting is adjourned.